I'll call the Finance Committee meeting to order. It's October 28th, 2025. I would like to wrap up the meeting no later than 7:10. So we don't have what we had happen last time where we were running into everybody coming in here. So I will try to keep the meeting rolling and then cut us off whenever we need to. First thing I want to get off on the agenda is a claim that we've been having some trouble getting on our agenda and getting cleared off. This is for 4,700 block of floral back in the early spring. One of our trees fell on this guy's power line. He got it fixed right away and then has submitted a claim to us.
We'll let Mr. Bonzel in.
Okay, all right. We're having trouble with the doors. And so the claim is for his deductible of his insurance payment, which is what Keith Moore has said that we covered. Anybody want to look over this?
I remember that from last time, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I think I'm fine with approving it. Is it that's a suggested course of action on that other people have said? Or I know we've talked about this before, so.
First thing is you said a tree. And then this says a city vehicle caused it. Is there two different things I'm looking at?
Yeah, the Gwin one is for a tree.
Okay.
It's not for a. Yeah, I've seen the photos of it. Our public works people came within a few days, took down the tree, like cut the rest of it down.
Don't Duke handle that? If you got a power line down, don't Duke come and handle that? They don't charge you.
They, I don't know that. It was our tree that knocked it down.
Duke comes and handles that, they don't charge you.
Oh, okay.
So yeah, Duke will come in. If you got a power line down and it's a safety issue, Duke will come out and fix it. They don't charge you.
I didn't, I didn't know that. I was told.
Now, if it's. Yeah, I mean, as far as I know, if you got a power line down, Duke will come out and fix it. They will not charge you. I mean, they'll change, they've changed my lines going through my homes for your charge. Like as far as I install a 200 amp breaker and I'll need a bigger line coming from the street to the house. They'll do it for nothing. They don't, they don't charge you.
So what is the claim for then? Is it for power line or is it for something else?
It's for the, the cost of repairing the, like having an electrician hook up the power line back to the house. Keith Moore has said this was legitimate. It's legitimate that we're paying for the, or the, the claim is for the deductible of his insurance.
Sounds like he has some work done on his house. I mean, I don't know.
I mean, I saw the photo. It, it, the, the power line was knocked down. His neighbor has the exact same issue. It fell on her as well. She wants more than the deductible. So we're not conceding her claim because it's outside of our policy to give more than the deductible.
Yeah, but the policy is that if, if the city is liable for something that happened on someone's property, we can pay the insurance deductible, whatever that is, which I think is $300 in this case. Something like that. I may be mistaking the other one.
The total cost was 1395.
Yeah.
I did verify with Angela that she has the declaration to pay for his insurance, but it's not in here.
Sounds like you guys like agreed to pay for some things and not others. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of uncomfortable paying any of it. So, but you guys, you guys have already agreed to pay a certain amount.
Oh, we, we haven't.
Why would we pay anything? Like if they, if we're liable, they could just take us to small claims or something or is that how that works? But like, yeah, as far as I know, the power line, Duke replaced that if it's down. So I mean, just to my knowledge, Duke will do that for nothing. So we're us paying on something like that. It sounds a little weird to me, but that's, that's just, there could be other circumstances that I'm not aware of.
Yes, from what I've heard from Keith, we're, this was within our, our purview of what we've paid for in the past.
Is there other ones or is this the only one we're working on tonight?
This is the only one we're working on tonight. I'm okay passing this one because we've, we've taken so long to deal with this guy. He's given it to us back in April and we've just not, through the insurance issue and everything else, we've just not been able to deal with it until now. Any other thoughts or comments?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Redden, just to, just to relay, it sounds like the, the tree was in trouble back in April. The city was contacted, but there was some, something out of commission, some vehicle or something that was out of commission that prevented them from doing the work. And then the tree subsequently fell and tore out the electrical wire from his house. And so he had to pay $1,395 to restore service. And was told the city would reimburse me. And that was back in, in April or May. And so that's, I don't, I don't know if the fact.
Really appreciate that though, because I don't have that information from you. So I really appreciate you leaving it there. It still doesn't change my opinion. I think Duke pays for that. I think they're trying to get us to pay for some sort of electrical work that they've done inside their home. So I, I would be uncomfortable paying out, but listen, I'm not the boss here. So I would be uncomfortable paying out, guys. But if we've already decided to and we're okay with it, I'm not fighting that, but I wouldn't pay, I wouldn't pay that.
Here's the invoice for what we're being told.
But I'm not going to, like I said, who am I? Do you remember what you decided? I would say, I would say no to that. So because in my opinion, three hits, line down, Duke fixes it, no charge. Now, if there's some stuff going on on the inside of the house and then they've had that fixed, that's something else that Duke wouldn't cover. But if there, this, this looks like a new service to me. This looks like a 200 amp service. Like, I don't know. I don't know. That's just my opinion, but you know, one guy.
Ms. Franson, how do you feel about the situation?
I was trying to look up rules about Duke and things. If it's, I think that the mitigating factor was that the power bot, like it wasn't just the line. It was like the box on the house itself had been demolished as well. They had to have some electrician come out to, to fix it. But I was trying to remember because it's been several months since I had looked at the stuff. I'm, uh. I appreciate your input, Mr. Redden, though, because you know, it, people can take advantage of this type of thing. I think in this case, I'm more inclined to be okay with paying their deductible since we, someone from the city had told him that is what they would do. It was a tree in our right of way that we were not able to take care of in time. So I'm fine with approving the claim, but I think it would be good to make sure we're doing due diligence on this stuff because I don't want it to be, had the city to be taken advantage of by unscrupulous people. I don't think that's the case for this one.
Let me ask Mr. Miracle a question because me and you dealt with this one time.
Yeah.
You had a tree fall down and we had a, a line replaced from your street all the way to one of your homes. Do you remember that?
No. Where was it? Was it?
You had your tree fall down. It was up.
Oh, was it in Middletown? Oh, okay. Yeah, 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 yeah.
And your line came down.
I don't know if it's the same.
We did some work, city came out, put a new line in. And that was, I mean, we're talking probably 400 feet.
Yeah.
Or no, you know what? It was a little closer, but still they came out and put 100, they, they changed, they didn't charge you. Did you get a bill from Duke? I mean, I don't think you did.
I totally forgot about that, John. I'm sorry. It's been, it's been a while.
I'm lucky I remembered.
It's about 10 years ago, I think. But yeah, you're right, they did, and I did not.
Right, so because they, they don't charge you for that. So, but anyway, that's just my opinion. So you can pay them if you want, but my opinion is, I, I, I was, because we, I saw them on the agenda, you know, we're looking at these. Like why, I feel, feel like wrong being judge jury because I'm not really, don't have that type of, I'm not a judge. So like if I'm not going to pay one of them, I'm not going to pay them all. So.
We did deny a bunch that came through in the.
And I deny them all then, but that's just my opinion, guys. Look, I'm not here to argue. I'm not here, you know, I'm going to, one guy.
What was the, thank you, Chair. What was the mitigating, like what's the factor that makes it not an act of God, but more of a liability? Is there some factor that's a part of it that?
I do not know that.
Well, I think Mr. Moore, just sorry, sorry, Chair, but I think Mr. Moore just said that, that someone reported an issue with the tree. And we did have some sort of, we had some sort of equipment down and they didn't get to it.
That's, yep, then that would be. Yeah, there's the, so if it weren't for that, then I would probably say.
Oh, yeah.
But still.
But no, but I mean, still that's a, but the thing is like it's a city, just like if your neighbor, let's say you have a, a, a tree behind your house that like you and your neighbor kind of share, but it's on their property and it's like rotted on the inside. And you've told them, you've sent them letters and then all of a sudden that tree falls on your garage. That's no longer an act of God. That is a, they are liable because you've told them and sworn them.
And I have a situation where you didn't do.
And they didn't, and they didn't handle it. So I will just say too, that I think, and you all have heard me say this multiple times. I think it's ridiculous that you all are having to sort through these things, that it should be, there should be a recommendation from the city administration and law department on which ones to pay and which ones not to pay. And then you all would just approve like the, you know, like, and this one would like to go in, yes, we should pay it. But because you're in the situation that you're in, yeah, I mean, I think that makes.
Well, here's my thing.
That makes total sense, yeah.
Duke don't charge for a down line.
But what, well, what, whatever it is, somebody charged them for whatever, like whatever that invoice is that their insurance company paid. Their insurance company wouldn't have paid it.
Can I see it again?
Their insurance company would not have paid that invoice or their part, you know, the part of that wasn't the duck deductible if the insurance company didn't think that it was the responsibility of the homeowner.
So it's the meter base. It's the meter base. New weather head.
I think, and I think that's probably the connect, I think that's.
They got new service. Here's what happened, guys. Okay, the tree knocked, the tree knocked the line down and they had to have it replaced. So they took advantage of that and they disworked on their house. They could have, they could have put that back together, put a, they could have put this back together. Duke don't charge them, so, but it's all right. Look, I'm not, I'm just telling you.
But that's the thing, Duke wouldn't have done. I mean, not everybody is as, is as mechanical as you are, Mr. Redden and.
That's cool.
But I'll tell you right now.
Then I wouldn't deny them all.
If my service did get knocked out, I would, sorry, Mr. Chair, but if my service did get knocked out, I have 100 amp service right now. You better believe that I'd be paying the difference to have a 200 amp service get put in. I mean.
You, you don't know this guy, do you?
No, I don't even know what they say there, what you're talking about. I just know, I just wanted to know what the act of God stance was. You know, what, what made it so that it was a liable less act of God.
Just for purposes of time.
Yeah.
I say don't pay, but you take the credit, you take the wheel and I'll support you.
I'm good with approving it, yes.
Yeah, I'm as well, just because I think some of the, um, the discourse with the city that he had or seems to have had. I think that's a differentiating matter here.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, but it is good to be cautious and not just like it approve everything, you know?
I think my thing is if you approve one, you approve them all, or if you disapprove one, you, I mean, I, who, who says what, who we pay? That's all right.
All right.
I'm going to go ahead and move on. Mr. Miracle, you want to give us any information about standing reports?
Yes, yeah, I have quite a few things this evening, so. First of all, I'm happy to report, we emailed the draft of the budget out this afternoon. So that's outstanding. So, um, I would assume as we move on, we'll, we'll discuss that at each Finance Committee meeting and your questions or comments or, or whatever. So I was just able to do it late today, so apologize for that, but wanted to make sure that we, we did get that to you as quickly as possible.
It's early in the scope of things.
It's early in the scope of things. We have about, I, I, I think, five months, I think it's due first part of April or something like that. We have to, we have to do, so we have, we've got a considerable amount of time to review and take our time and.
It's great to have all the information now, so I don't, we don't have it like two days before. Like there's so much information to ingest.
Right.
And I appreciate you getting it to us as early as you did.
Well, thank you to Mr. Powers and all the department heads that, that put a lot of effort in this. And then of course Mayor Schneider and so that's, it's certainly the direction that, that we want moving forward to, to do is get that to you as, as quickly as possible so we can all start the, the process of, of reviewing, so.
Yes. Is it better to run through your sort of full slate of updates and then circle back to anything related to this or would?
Whatever you would like, Mr. Moore.
Let's get through the standing reports and then get into the details.
Okay, sure, sure, sure. Okay, a couple, a couple of things I want to share. You know, part of the report on accounting methods is capital assets. And I think in the past, the capital assets were, Norcom was, was responsible for that. And I've asked the Safety Service Director that the Auditor's Office be responsible for the capital assets. So moving forward, we're going to be taking care of that. Just so you know, they use a, um, inventory management system called Asset Tiger, which ironically, we use that at Monty and several of our locations. So it's pretty, pretty easy. So Sharon and I met with Noah last week, so we're going, we're going to take care of that. I'll report on that as, as we move further. So there's quite a bit of work to do there. So also monday.com, we've been meeting with them on a regular basis. Our, it looks like our kickoff date is going to be December 1st. First thing that we're working on, like I've said before, is the 34 items for the report on accounting methods. And the way this works, just a quick overview, all of you will have viewing rights. And as we build this, we're going to build in dates and responsibilities. And then you will get an auto-generated email when something's complete. You also get an auto-generated email when something goes past, past the due date. So we'll dive in that a little bit more as we, as we move forward. And Ariana and Sharon and myself are going to be the admins on that. You should have gotten an email. This is just the initial, we'll get you signed up with the username and a password. It tells me, I think everybody, maybe a couple haven't hit that yet, but if you haven't, please do. We had a meeting this morning, 10 a.m. this morning. This was a request for proposals for the new auditing group that we're going to be using next year. We met with Tracy Moore, who's one of the directors of the Auditor State. And so we have until next, they have until next Tuesday, the 4th, to submit their proposal. So they can ask questions of us up until then, but we, we had a meeting today and they asked a few questions. And it's a pretty thick packet. I can forward it to you if, if you just like to look at it for, just to have, kind of see what the, what's happening there. Also working on the financial primer. I did send that out and thank you to Mrs. Hoover. She replied and said she liked it, so I got one thumbs up, so I'll take that. But we will continue to work that. We have that in a Word document right now and we're updating that. And one of the things that we want to do in there, kind of, it'll relate to another topic here in just a second, but we're going to invite Mr. Brossert from Bradley Payne. We'd like to have him come to Finance Committee meeting and even Council meeting to kind of give us a little update and maybe some, some things that we can utilize and put into the financial primer to explain a little bit better about, about the TIPS and the tips that we have and, and how all of that works. So.
Mr. Miracle. Yes. Just with regard to Mr. Brossert's future visit, I know he does a number of things for the city. And so in addition to like the primer, it would be interesting to hear some of his work with like sort of refinancing bonds and some of that kind of stuff associated with the different projects and just some of the ways that I think he's done that advantageously for the betterment really of, like everybody in the city, including the schools.
Yeah, I, I agree, Mr. Moore. What I'd like to do is get from him kind of a detailed, you know, what his services provide and, and kind of how that works. So that moving forward, we're all kind of, you know, the, you know, on a little deeper level. But, and also Morgan Steiner, I'm, I'm not sure if she was going to be coming with him. But then Ohio checkbook, Ariana, our accounting specialist, has taken over the Ohio checkbook and she will be updating that on a monthly basis. I don't know if you guys have gotten on there for a little, I think Mr. Bonzel told me he had visited here recently.
I visited last week.
Did you? So, so you, just a quick survey, looks good, you like it?
Yeah, it's good, you know, it's kind of had to learn how to navigate it. But once I figured it out, you know, it's pretty, pretty plain to see the different funds, where things were, where we're getting tax revenue from, where that's going to, so.
Good, good. Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, I was, I was using it to find a fund, or a fund expenditure, how much we spent from a specific fund. So it was in a previous year, so like it was really good for that. I think you told me that you were going to be working on some of the categories that are on there that, to make it so that it's a little bit more detailed at some point. But, but, but I mean, yeah, it's a great start and it's great that I could literally, I could Google it and, and get that information, so.
Good, thank you for that. Yeah, we'll continue to make improvements on that as well. As I mentioned, I think at the last meeting beginning in January, we're going to have a student from Xavier, a work-study program. We're going to work on the auditor's website. I think that's beyond my scope. So we're going to get someone in here that can kind of clean that up for us and make it a little user-friendly. Just to update, Joanne is working on our retention. I think I've mentioned that before, retention policy. She's working a couple of days a week for us and I think we're up to 70 plus boxes right now. It's quite a bit. That's a pretty, pretty tall order. We've already had document destruction come once and put out an email. Mr. Moore was nice enough to give us, I mean, he had 11 boxes that we destroyed. So we've had one round of that. So we're going to start getting into a little regular rhythm with that. So that's something that, you know, that's required by Ohio Vice Code and we're making sure that, that we comply with that. We are working on, uh, two things I have on the agenda tonight that I wanted to talk about quickly is, um, the, the, the tax rate, you'll see that on there. That's, that's house, house creeping, we have to do that. It's just an ordinance saying that you, you have it, you blessed it. We have to send that down to Hammond County Auditor, which we spoke to them last week. And that's an annual thing, so. And then the other one was the, talking about the TIPS, the second half settlement, which as, as you know, Bradley Payne does the, does the calculation for us. So we have to wait till they give us the calculation. And then this year, there are, or this, this half year, there are three on there that we had to increase. So I sent you all of the, all the paperwork kind of behind that. So that'll be on the agenda tonight. And I think there was a, there was an error on there that had a, a decrease. We need to, we need to cross that out. So I'll do that with the, when we amended, amended agenda. I didn't mean to go talk so quickly, but I wanted to make sure we got through all that so I can try and answer questions or, or any thoughts that you have.
Yeah, I want to come back to our conversation about the budget from our last meeting. But Mr. Moore, I think it's now time for your question.
Oh, sure. Uh, yeah, so I think the, um, you're, if you're playing along at home with the Financial Recovery Plan, bingo. So where, where we are today is, is this item, let's see, format for appropriations. Item C, honor before November 1st of each year, the Finance Committee, City Auditor and Mayor shall submit to City Council fund appropriations at the personal services and other object levels by departments for all funds. So yeah, so first of all, just thank you so much for your work on that. Certainly it's helpful to see the developed, developed by column, you know, with Auditor, Treasurer, Police Chief, Fire Chief, Safety Service Director, you know, everybody's input. And certainly this is a huge document and yeah, just grateful to everybody that I just said, Superintendent of Public Works, so on and so forth, for their efforts there. I guess a couple, a couple of quick questions, I guess, like top, top line stuff that I noticed kind of, kind of clicking, clicking through. There was one in, in public lands that was, and I'm not suggesting you need to answer this, but I guess just for follow-up. There was a, there was a number in public lands that was, because that was one of the, um, accounts that had the biggest variance from sort of what we said might be the number a year ago in 2026 versus sort of what's the actual 2026 number now that we're getting closer. And, and essentially I think the majority of that, or almost the entirety of that discrepancy has to do with a line item that is about strategic property acquisition. And that just was like, oh, like tell me more. What, what is the strategic property acquisition, you know, that, that is in mind? And so certainly understanding that better, I think would be a good thing. Another one would be the, I know we had talked to like last, two weeks ago about the Building Department and just to the extent that there was interest in, you know, is that office staffed correctly? Like do they need more resources, that sort of thing? It seems like five is the number that they have in terms of headcount in that department for 26. I think that's essentially flat from where they are right now. And just my question was like, is that, you know, does, does Mr. Wolf feel good about that? Does he wish he had another, somebody to do inspection work or do whatever it might be to enhance that department's work? And then, you know, certainly there's a lot that we can go through. Those were just a couple of like the, the top line notes that I had made. And yeah, as we move towards December 1st, would value additional perspective on those.
Sure, I would like to suggest from the team, if you could perhaps shoot me an email and before our next meeting, we'll try to have those, those specific questions.
Sure.
Answered and we can kind of, maybe that'll be the, the rhythm that we get into as you, because I know we threw a lot at you, you know? So if you could review that and as you, as a question comes to mind, let's, let's get a, a list together and then, then the next time we meet, we can try and address those and, and discuss those. One of the additional items I did want to tell you is that we, there are a couple of things that we don't know, right? We don't know what the healthcare premium increase is going to be. So I think Mr. Powers is working with our HR Director. So I think that'll be something down the road here, I would say in a pretty, pretty timely fashion. We'll know maybe, maybe by November I could ask him, but, um, so that's, that's something to, to, to keep in, in front of you as well. So, but I think that might be the best foot forward, Mr. Moore. Just like a couple of thoughts you had right there, anything with Mr. Girdon or Mr. Braden or Mrs. Franson or in the, or the, you know, the other council members as well. And then we'll, when we reconvene next month, we'll start just checking them off as we get through.
Makes sense. So I think we, we talked about it two weeks ago. I know you probably have a list, um, somewhere, but I'll see if other council members have anything to add.
Yeah, and I did include them on, when I sent that out. So they have that from them as well.
I have a minute from.
Oh, great, perfect. Talk about the specific things, yes. That's what I thought, so.
So on that topic, in our last meeting that we had, kind of our special meeting, two specific things came up. One is a suggestion to increase the community center's material supplies budget by $10,000 for next year. This would be hopefully earmarked for the senior center. But I talked to Mr. Gabbert and material supplies is where they need that the most. So that was one suggestion. The other suggestion was $40,000 for, well, from what I've talked to other people, I mean, this is something I want to confirm with you all, that it would go into the City Council budget under contractual services and it would be earmarked for North Community Television. That would fund them fully through next year with what the school board has contributed and what their franchise fees. The other two issues we talked about was the Building Department. We didn't get to any kind of conclusion about that. And then something about talking to Mr. Moore about. And then something about talking to Mr. Moore about doing the zoning board or zoning policy review. Do we need to ask, ask some kind of special counsel or something like that?
Outside.
Outside counsel.
Yeah.
To come review our zoning board. So those did not get fully discussed. So that's where we are with the budget process conversation from last week or two weeks ago. And open that up for other discussion.
My first question, sir, so you want to increase our, you want to increase our, our council budget by $10,000 and earmark it for?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand? And earmark 10,000 for the cable channel?
All 40 of that would go to the cable channel. It doesn't need to go in the council budget, but that just seemed like a.
Oh, I see, okay.
A common.
I was reading that wrong.
Yeah, this was kind of, oh, sorry.
No, please, what, what, what's the budget now? Are we increasing it $40,000?
We give them $0.
Okay.
They are falling short because of the people cutting the cable bills. And because people are getting off cable, their franchise fees are dwindling to the point that they are not able to sustain operations.
Yeah, so it's, this was an idea that, just a recommendation. It seemed logical to put it in council's part of the budget, but figured this is a good time to, to ask and see what, what, what money do we have that is able to be supported them potentially.
And ideally, it would be like no other part of council would benefit from, from this money. This would go directly to.
Yes.
NCT. Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, just on that note, by the way, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea that if you truly want to make sure it gets into CT, I would put it in the council budget if I were you personally, because then, you know, the decision's made by you all or the president, councillor, whoever. You, I mean, while you're already adding money to the council budget, you may want to consider adding, you know, I don't know, some dollars for like, if you all want to go to a conference next year or like there's people who do like pursue like some educational opportunities to be a better council person. It's something that in the past, there hasn't really been money to add to it, but just thought I'd point that out. You all could, you all could add a few extra dollars in the council budget if there's things that you all are spending money on today, like that helps your constituent. I don't know, I don't have a great example right now, but.
Yeah, I, I know what you mean, like there's many, like the Treasurers Union or Auditors, they have different conferences, National Auditors Society. That could be something we could look into.
Yeah, even your, the Ohio Municipal League fees that you all might have to pay to go to that conference. Anyways, might not be a bad idea, just put a little extra money in there for that, just, or whatever else you think, though, because you all shouldn't have to pay. I mean, to me, you all shouldn't be paying for those kind of edge development things out of your own pocket.
And this is the time to ask, and if the answer's no, well, we asked.
Well, as I understand this, we need to, according to the FRP, have this sent to the administration by November 1st? Or is it October 31st or November 1st?
So it's, so item C is honor before November 1st of each year, the Finance Committee, City Auditor and Mayor shall submit to City Council fund appropriations at the personal services and other object levels. So I think that basically, I think everyone was on that email today, not just us. So I think at this point, sort of item C would have been net in sharing a draft budget. Just to follow up on that, though, so item D on this checklist in the FRP is honor before December 1st. City Council shall complete its budget hearings on the city's estimates. To ensure compliance with the recovery plan, the city's estimates shall be sent to the financial supervisor for review by the clerk of council within seven days from passage of the proposed appropriations ordinance resulting from the city council's budget hearings on the city's estimates. So that's a mouthful, but it seems like December 1st is kind of the next milestone for having, let's say, hashed this out more and then ultimately sending something to the financial supervisor, I'm assuming is Anna Mary in seven days of passage of this sort of rough draft budget.
So to the administration, who's been here longer than us or you've ever done this in your tenure, how do we call City Council budget hearings? Is this something I just need to bring up in new business to the Chair or to the President and, and ask for that kind of meeting? Or do we just have extra finance committee meetings and call them budget hearings?
In my opinion, don't the, the administration writes the budget, right? The mayor does that. The mayor's supposed to write the budget, right? And we approve it.
The, the FRP is the mayor's budget in the FRP.
But that comes out of the mayor's office administration and we just vote on it. We don't, I mean, we obviously can, we ask for, we have a wish list. We can ask for things that we want, but that comes out of the mayor's office, I believe.
Yeah, Noah, he gathered everything from all of the department heads and then, then he went over this. I went over, Sharon and I went over them, and then the, the mayor went over, obviously as well with, with Noah. But I, I think it's important that we, we get on the, you know, get on the right path here and, and make sure that we're pushing this down the, so that we can get this to Anna Mary in a timely, in a timely fashion. My understanding is, I'm not, I don't remember the exact date that the FRP was passed last year, but we do have to have it passed before that date.
I think our department heads report to Noah, our Safety Service Director.
Yeah, they've already, they, they've already.
And they get there to, if they want to increase their budgets or if, you know, whatever they want to do with their budgets. And then the administration puts that together and then we oversee that and, and vote, vote yes or no, whether we like it or not. Yeah, so that comes out of the administration's office.
But it's.
The FRP. We can be as. We can be involved, like, if, as much as you really want to be involved, I guess, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I don't, I don't think, at least it's my memory, that I don't think that's how it's done previously, but maybe that's something to bring up in new business tonight and, and ask, you know, Mayor.
Yeah, it'd be good to just have some.
What's the next, you know.
Meetings, yeah, what, what's the next step?
Yep.
So we can basically just, everyone knows what's in the budget, the draft budget, not just people who are looking at it right now in finance. So, so we all can be on the same page once it gets to that time.
We've got five more minutes to hit to my goal. Should we call another Finance Committee meeting in the first meeting of November and work on, work at that as if it's a budget hearing?
What is that, the 11th?
Tennessee 11th, I think.
So I guess I had a question about this. It depends on what, I guess, what your objectives are. I think that there's a lot of flexibility here because the financial recovery plan has constrained the council for so long. And honestly, we weren't, well, like the things that Mr. Moore is reading, of course, they were there. We weren't necessarily like going down that exact path in the past, but I think it's great that you all are. I think it depends on like what, how much detail you all want. Do you want just to have the mayor and the Safety Service Director here answering questions? Do you want the, like them to bring their department heads with them, like, and you want them to be, you know, answering questions as well? I think, it just, I think it just depends on kind of how, what you want this hearing to kind of look like. Because in the future, when we're not in fiscal emergency, then the goal is going to be that, yeah, we're going to have like true budget hearings in September, you know, August, September, October to hit that 1031 deadline, or 1131 or what have you, but, or 1130, excuse me. But I think it's just kind of, yeah, I think it's really a little bit more in your court. If you do want to have like all the department heads here, you also might consider just having like a little bit earlier if you can, Finance Committee meetings. So maybe like at 5:00 or something, if that's possible, just throwing it out there. But, um, yeah, I think whatever you all ask for, I would think that they would try to make happen and I wouldn't think that it'd get denied.
Yeah, if I may, and maybe what we do, Mr. Bonzel, is the, maybe there's an initial, let's say with the mayor and Noah, where they can maybe answer top-level questions, but subsequently, if there's a, you know, a deep dive on a thing, you know, maybe that's a secondary thing where we say, hey, we don't need all 12 department heads or whatever, but let's invite these three so we can really dive deep on this thing from the subject matter expert. So maybe it's kind of a one-two punch.
Start off with the administration, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I think you'll have flexibility and I think whatever path you go, it sounds great. I mean, I think it's going to be great for the citizens for that to happen.
And for me, I can, I can start as early as 5:00 potentially, yeah, we can try to figure that out, but we don't have to go into the details, sorry.
Well, I mean, we probably should go ahead and make that decision, so that way it gives us some time to get people there. Do we want to have a, a meeting on November 11th, which would be before next council meeting?
That's fine with me.
What's the earliest that everybody else could be there?
I want to say too much more before 5:00, I mean.
I mean, let's say 5:00 would be the.
Yeah, 5:00, I, I teach, I teach until 4:50, so 5:00 is the earliest I could get.
Okay, yeah, 5:00 would be fine.
I work until 5:00, so like.
5:15, 5:30?
Yeah.
What's the earliest you would be comfortable with?
5:30.
Okay, all right, so then I will request that the mayor and the SSD join us on November 11th at 5:30. And I will also email the rest of council to say this is a budget hearing according to the FRP. They can submit any comments directly to us or then, of course, attend the meeting and speak up, you know, in, in a public thing. Any other questions, comments or concerns before we adjourn the meeting? Mr. Bonzel and then Mr. Moore.
Okay, yeah, I was just gonna say, if you have one other option here, you could, if you wanted all of the council members to be involved in this part or to have the option to ask questions about budgetary things like that or how things are appropriated. You could do like, have like Joe schedule a committee, the whole Andrew Finance Committee at the same time, so that you could kind of have like your, you could still chair it. But just an option that you could consider as you think about this.
That's a good idea.
Well, and just on that point, because I'm not sure the standard for Thanksgiving, that Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and I'm not suggesting not having a meeting, but I just don't know if attendance might be tougher at that meeting. So I don't know if we should look at like November 11th and then maybe like November 18th? Just to sort of lock in those dates and like give us, give ourselves the best chance at high attendance without running into that Thanksgiving week.
Yeah.
And still being ahead of the December 1st target.
Yeah, the school just turns out that whole week, so I would say that's probably a.
Yeah, a lot of people travel.
So are we in favor of having two meetings or are we suggesting only having the Thanksgiving week?
Well, I guess I'm just saying to do the 11th, to do one the 11th that is a joint committee of the whole Finance Committee meeting and then to sort of preserve the time on November 18th.
In case we need more discussion.
The third Tuesday.
Okay. The third Tuesday in case, just again, to have the optionality to have a deeper dive meeting, should we need one.
I think that's a good idea, just to have that in mind. If we don't need it, never give.
Okay, I will confer with the President when the meeting's over, or their main meeting is over with tonight. And then if you could, I'll pass this sheet around for a minute and we will, anything else for the good of the board?
Just, are we, is there something that we're going to ask tonight during new business? What was that?
Oh, I totally forgot, there was something I was.
There was someone asking the mayor about sort of the, maybe the back and forth of the process.
I would, I will communicate with the mayor via email to ask him to join this committee of the whole meeting on November 11th. And I'll just have a private conversation with him, giving him background. All right, I will adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.